Thank you. Middleboro Planning Board meeting is called to order for March 11th. That's right, I said March 11th, 2014. Where did February go? First order of business or first item on the agenda is meeting notes, and I do see one from December 3rd, 2013. December 3rd? What happened? Skip out on this for a couple of weeks. Only a couple of weeks, right? Oh, no. Couple of weeks for us. Open for review and comment. Just amazing that nobody has any comments in the meeting notes.
Yeah. See if I can find it.
I'd look, I'd look too. I'm gonna find something.
Yeah. In the original pack or the additional?
The original.
Oh, there we go, sorry. Thank you.
Must have one heck of a spell checker. Hearing nothing? Anybody need more time? Okay. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 3rd, 2013, as submitted.
Some of.
We have a motion on the table. And a second. Open for further discussion. And.
Any others on the table say aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is payment of bills. First one is invoice from Niche Engineering, invoice number 43407. This is for Oak Point, in the amount of $1,740 even. Next one is for South Coast Media Group, invoice number 476451. All right, this is being, is this telling me it's being split?
There are two stamps on it, going in different.
It must be being split.
One going under account num, part of it going under account numbers, SEL Advertising?
That was for our secretarial position.
Oh, in the amount of $588. And the second portion going under Campanelli, account number, company and Campanelli, for $286.
It's in the map, is it going correctly?
The next one is from WB Mason, invoice I16602535, off a stationary for $1.45. This is for a watch battery.
It's actually for a calculator battery, and then put in my calculator, my calculator fizzled.
Guide. That would be it.
Make a motion that we approve the invoices as written.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. And a second. Open for further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstained? Next study on, a nice, next, whoa. Next item on the agenda is a Form A. You would please open your plans. Do that all at once so we can not disturb the microphones. Is this yours?
Yes, Luckcraft.
Yes.
Form A for Susan M. Rau.
Did I pronounce that right? Okay. Wanna do a short presentation? Or as long as you want.
It shouldn't take long.
Okay.
Hopefully. Something with this plan, we're not creating any new lots or unbuildable lots. We're reconfiguring a couple of lots. I've got this coded in here just so you can see the configuration after what the lots will look like, the yellow and the green. This large piece in map, 66 lot 5414, is currently developed for the home. And Mr. Luckcraft will be selling that home, but what he wants to do prior to transfer is combine a couple of parcels. This parcel up here is a sheep pasture that he would like to go with the home, he's been using it with the home. And this parcel A is a parcel of upland that he would like to convey with the home. And as part of that, he's already sold some adjacent pieces, which aren't part of this plan, but he sold them to Bayside Agricultural. And Bayside will be purchasing what's remaining in the green there, parcel B, and the remains of lot 5313. So we're not creating any new lots, any new buildable lots, adding some parcels to the existing home, house lot, and creating a larger lot, an unbuildable lot as it is now, which will be conveyed to Bayside Agricultural.
Okay. Any comments from the planning department?
No, we've reviewed that plan and it's adequate. He's just adding parcels to his existing house lot. One thing to point out, when Brian referred to, that he's sold a budding land to Bayside Agricultural, which is cranberry bog operation. He has also sold Amy Estates, which is the subdivision I think you guys approved back in like 2009, if you remember, on Tisba Quinn Street. So I believe that's going into cranberry bogs rather than a subdivision. They can, if they want, have you rescind it, otherwise it's just gonna be sitting under bogs. And Bayside Agricultural, I believe, and that's Peter Beaton's group, I believe they bought the Wayne Williams bogs on Sachem Street, is that correct?
I don't know.
Yeah, I believe they bought the Wayne Williams bogs on Sachem Street, which then abutted this land that Bob Luckcraft had, including Amy Estates. So it's all going into that hole. It's a nice, nice bunch of bogs.
I know that's not related to this, but I was gonna say, on the Amy Estates, if it's appropriate, I think we should, I would, I would, my opinion is to rescind it.
So that's something, I don't know, Craig, do you represent them at all, or Brian? Someone should, could say that to.
Unless anybody else has any thoughts. I wouldn't want it just sitting out there.
No sense, right now it's, until he puts it into bogs, it's being taxed as a subdivision. So if they're not gonna do it, it's not in their best interest to let it sit like that.
Right. When the time's appropriate.
That's what the old Hannah Rappert cover?
No. This was the other one. This was the one that you did with Joyce. Remember you went, and they had to change the culvert in the street and put a doghouse addition. Do you remember the doghouse?
Yep.
Okay.
I do recall that. So keeping on topic, any other, any planning board comments on the Form A? Anybody have any questions, thoughts, comments? Where's the access?
He accesses over a common driveway further up the street.
So it's right here?
Yes, called Black Fork Path.
So it'll remain a common driveway?
Yes, there'll be no change in the status of that.
What's that little existing building up there? Is that a shed or something?
It's a shed, I believe it's ready to fall down.
Okay, any other, any other thoughts or comments? Chair will entertain a motion to approve a Form A, or a plan of land in Middleboro, prepared for Susan M. Rau and Robert A. Luckcraft, prepared by GAF Engineering, Inc., dated, where's the date? February 24th, 2014.
Can I amend the motion to say that we will certify that there is no subdivision approval required for this set of plans?
Okay.
And I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table?
Okay.
Okay, so.
Actually, put that under further discussion.
Okay. So basically, I'm making a motion that we certify that approval is not required under subdivision control law for these sets of plans.
To explain, and everybody, it's probably worth going over. When you do a Form A plan, we're making the determination it's not a subdivision, because they have frontage on an existing street. And because they have frontage on an existing street, it's not a subdivision, which means subdivision approval is not required. That's what ANR stands for, Approval Not Required. So in the case when it's a bona fide Form A, it doesn't need any new frontage, it's got existing street frontage, so approval is not required. And that's what he's saying. We always say we make the motion to approve the Form A, but we're actually saying is we make the motion that subdivision approval is not required. So if you put the word subdivision before approval, it would make more sense in the minutes. Does anybody, everybody gets that, right?
Same tier of lot lines, that would actually be changed, and that's all the overall.
But even if they were making new lots bill, even if they had a big piece and they, as long as they had street frontage, it's not a subdivision, so subdivision approval's not required.
That's what I thought approval not required means.
Yeah, and that's what it means.
Okay, we have a motion on the table.
Second.
And a second. Now open up for further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Abstained? Yeah, open carry.
If you guys don't like putting that out there, I can pass it around if you still knew it, you should pass it right down.
Sometimes we like it.
Probably easier.
Brian Grady.
Brian.
The GAF Engineering, yes.
Brian?
Brian.
I'm sure that doesn't happen. Let me find the drawing.
Yeah, one of those, one of those pens is for the paper plan and.
Yep.
One's for the other.
Want this in the blue folder or down?
I want it here. Actually, Mike, if you wanna pull a, I think it was a yellow paper in there that says five copies and proof of recording before.
Is it the yellow one?
Yeah, I think that's the right one. That's gonna go with the MyLot.
Yep.
Yeah, a little before our hearing times, so we'll do number two under other, the agenda item, Planning Board Member Recruitment Resignation. Talked a little bit about this in the past. And we are, we are anticipating a resignation from Mr. Schwartz. However, we discovered that we can't, quote unquote, vote him out, the elected member. So we'll have to wait for that. In the meantime, our recruitment is a soft stack recruit. We can't officially do it until we have an open spot. Did I understand that well?
Correct.
Pretty much.
And even though he hasn't attended a meeting since January of 2013, because he's elected and not appointed, the three, missing of three meetings, town bylaw doesn't pertain to him. But it's been well over a year, 14 months or so.
So I spoke to him about it before, this was about a month ago, and I said he was gonna do it, and then I left him a message tonight as well. We'll see what happens. Otherwise, he goes up to 2:15, April. So we'll, I'll wait to hear from him on that. He's usually pretty responsive, so we'll see, we'll see what happens. Next item on the agenda is Louise, do we wanna do a Louise Estates? Oh.
Quick question on that. If he designs now, will this spot be open to for the one?
No.
Well, how do you feel?
We.
We're at the point, somebody?
A joint appointment of the planning board and the board of selectmen.
So then, next year, 2015, there'll be two, two board members.
No, next year's the year he's normally up. So he would, he's.
Oh, okay, so it'll only be one.
It would only be one.
Right.
And then that person, when they run, it would be a five-year term. So if they were appointed now, they would serve until April, run again.
Till the next available election.
Yeah.
Because that's how I got on.
Number three, can we do Louise Estates in five minutes?
Yeah, it's only there if you had any questions.
I saw the email, though.
Yeah, I had submitted a two-page letter to the zoning board of appeals. Planning Department still does not believe that this 40B is adequately mitigating the flooding. The abutting property has significant existing flooding problems now, and the whole, half of this 40B flows into that property. So when you add six houses to that side of the land, it's gonna be a significant increase, and there's no outlet where this house is located. So there are methodologies that we're trying to get them to either put back on the plan or to add. I did have a meeting with one of the developers, talking about the types of methods, I mean, it was with Billy Logan. So that they could put roof drains on to take the water from the roofs, get it right in the ground. And where they, the whole side of the site is going down to the property line, and the roadway will be discharging down to that location into subsurface leaching pits. So you're gonna be putting water in at that point, but all the surface flow goes there from the houses also. And there's no berm or anything at the property line to hold it while the one beehive grate picks it up. So the improvement now is at least the grading is going to this one point, but because it's not bermed off, there's no way of keeping the water there while it ponds up to go into this beehive grate. So all you're doing is directing all the flow from the 40B into this abutted yard. And right now, it already, when there's extreme events, it floods up to their threshold into their house. So at the same time, the developer's working with Chris Peck and the DPW on reconfiguring the intersection of Rocky Meadow Street. So we've discussed with Chris to make sure they super elevate the berm as it goes by the driveway, so no water from Rocky Meadow can actually go into this property, because it was being flooded by Rocky Meadow a few years ago. And so there's also a question of making sure there's not high groundwater down there. And my suggestion to Chris Peck today was maybe that have the zoning board put a condition that says when they build it, the new row configuration, they'll actually look at groundwater, and if they have to adjust how the drainage is handled, they do it then. Because otherwise, this, the 40B would certainly have adverse impacts, but we think it can be mitigated.
Pardon your silence, I do represent the developers of Louise Estates. Actually, this Thursday, they're gonna be presenting new conceptual plans, I don't know if you've seen them yet. For the 40B, which actually do not involve the construction of a subdivision, although I believe they're reducing the number of lots to be six or seven, and they're planning on potentially doing a common driveway. And it's one of the concerns that the zoning board has had, was the number of lots which were to be developed at the site. So they're gonna be presenting that, the zoning board's, the roadway drainage issue may be moot at this point, depending on what the zoning board does decide.
But I think you still, you'd have the houses and they're impervious, so you'd still wanna do roof drains and what, and whatnot.
Exactly. With respect to the actual drainage, it may not be, be not as much of an issue at that point. Like I said, they have, if one group is presenting, we have three conceptual plans, and see, and then see what one zoning board would prefer, and for construction purposes.
If they wanna come by, I'd be willing and able to meet with them between now and Thursday night, if they'd like to come by and.
I think one thing they're waiting for also is comment from the fire department on what they've done, and I would like to comment on that.
What are they using for frontage?
They just need to reduce time.
So it's still a 40B, but with no street.
I don't even think we really need to talk about number one yet, right?
No. Number one, Sheffield, they're making good progress. I didn't bring the email tonight, but they pretty much got everything done they needed to do. They still have the deed issue outstanding. Tim Spillane came and met with me last week, so we felt that it didn't make any sense for him to come in, and, you know, he was somewhere out of town, so we said, you don't have to come in, we'll just report that. It's but for the, the deed, they're on target.
Okay.
We've got the article on the town meeting warrant, now we have to look at the time and see if, if we're already at the drop dead date, which we could be, and we don't have the deed.
Okay. We're gonna open the hearing for Campanelli Industrial Park, so he has legal.
Let me see if I have a bigger copy, I don't think I do, though.
I think I can read it.
I was gonna say, what happened to the easel?
It's in the corner.
It needs to be stood up.
All right. The next item on the agenda is a hearing for Campanelli Industrial Park, modification of the amended and restated master special permit, and, I'm thinking there's two here, Form C modification, owner, Campanelli Middleboro Land 2 LLC. We do have a legal notice. Do we have the butters? Thank you. This is the official public notice that has been posted in the Middlegro, Middle, Middleboro Gazette newspaper, dated February 20th and February 27th, 2014, and reads as follows. The Middleboro Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 11th, 2014, at 8:00 PM in the Selectman's Room, Town Hall 10 Nickerson Ave., Middleboro. Relative to the subdivision control law for applicant Campanelli Middleboro Land 2 LLC, 1 Campanelli Drive, Rain Tree, Mass. 02184, for the modification of the definitive plan, I'm sorry, definitive Phase II subdivision initially approved by the Middleboro Plan, Planning Board on January 31st, 1990, and subs, subs, essentially, modify, there it is, on June 6th, 2000. The petition seeks to further modify the subdivision, approval relieving the applicant from constructing the main, the remainder of Campanelli Drive beyond its current location and condition. Campanelli Drive extension beyond its current location is not necessary to serve the lots within the Campanelli Business Park subdivision. The applicant also requires the issuance of a release of the subdivision covenant for Campanelli Drive, can't read that word, oh, and the release of the surety. The subdivision is shown on the plans by Bradford Savitz Associates, dated April 19th, 1989, revised January 31st, 1990, and modified on June 6th, 2000. Definitive subdivision modification involves Phase II only, which property is located on Assessors Map 39, lots 271, 1043, 196, 1819, and 1812, is bound northerly by Perkins, I think I've got some really good names here, Impresca, Capperneck, Per. Impresca, Capperneck, Persinier, Corombs, Hayes, Ezel, Oakley, Zeon, and Murphy. Easterly by Clay Street, bounded on the southerly side by Southern N.E. Farm Credit, and is also bounded on the west side by Bradford Street. Anyone desiring to be heard on the subject should appear at the time and place designated. Plans and applications may be viewed at the Planning Department, Town Offices, 20th Center Street, second floor, Middleborough, Mass., signed off by the Middleborough Planning Board." We got the cards?
Yep.
Boy, those are some really wild names in there.
Good evening. You did a pretty good job.
Not bad.
Good evening. Dick Halverson with Campanelli Companies. Try to keep this as simple as I possibly can. This is a piece of what we had been seeking from you up until, I believe it was last August, when we withdrew our applications for several reasons. And at the time, we advised you that we would likely be back again, and here we are. If I could maybe just pass out some small copies of the plan that you see up here, which is the plan in your folder, but just colored to...
Oh.
To make it a little easier for you to see what's going on. For those that may not be familiar, I think most of you are, but those that aren't, Campanelli Drive was originally a subdivision to extend from Bedford Street through to Clay Street with a master plan, if you will, to ultimately connect to the park at 495 of Commerce Boulevard. And for a number of reasons, the need for that has essentially disappeared or gone away. And I don't think it was ever the intention of the town or Campanelli to actually physically connect it to Clay Street and put our traffic on Clay Street. So what we're seeking is simply to modify the subdivision to leave Campanelli Drive in its current condition, which you see in gray here. The right-of-way will remain in place, so that in the future, if there ever becomes a need for the town or someone else to continue Campanelli Drive, that land will be available to do so. But in the meantime, we'll leave Campanelli Drive in its current configuration. Before that ends, we have a fire chief to look at Campanelli Drive and its configuration and access to the adjacent buildings. And he wrote a letter, which unfortunately, I didn't bring a copy of, but I know Ruth has one. Basically, we asked him to look at it from the perspective of public safety. Is it possible to get fire trucks in and out of there to access the buildings properly and not to have a problem getting his trucks landlocked in that street? And effectively, he felt that it was adequate for fire protection purposes the way it currently exists. There is full access around all of the buildings that exist and that have frontage on Campanelli Drive as well. About two years ago, when we were pursuing this previously, we had developed with the town a punch list, if you will, of what was at that time looked at as deficiencies or aging of the road infrastructure out there. And at that time, we undertook to mitigate all of those punch list items, brought all of those corrective measures to the front, which included crack filling, restraightening and resetting some of the granite curbing and things of that sort. So we've since implemented an annual maintenance program, where we do an analysis of the road in the spring, which will be coming up shortly, do our crack filling and other remedial repairs that need to get done. Essentially, the road's in pretty good condition out there. It's not... It's not potholed or settled. It's in pretty good condition, given its age.
Can I just interrupt?
Absolutely.
Is the planning department observed this or witnessed? Are they satisfied?
I have not gone out there recently. We did go out there after they did the last time, and it was satisfactory back then, but now, three-plus years have gone by.
So we think that as part of this approval process, we should probably do another walk?
Probably should do another walk.
Not that I don't believe you. I do. It's probably very well done, I'm sure. And you've implemented an annual?
We have an annual maintenance program, that is, the cost of which is shared by the owners in the park as common area maintenance, where we go out each spring and do an analysis and remedial repair work if it's required.
And did you say you saw the copy of the fire department's?
I can read the fire department's letter.
If you could. Oh, it's in here. Oh, okay. Never mind. It's in our packet. Please, continue.
There will also need to be a modification, not only to vote it on, to the plan itself, which is what we have here. This is effectively an as-built plan, but the language in the covenant, the subdivision covenant, will have to be amended also as part of our request ostensibly to relieve us of the obligation to complete Campanelli Drive and to release the bond, which is currently posted with the town for the completion of that work.
Okay. And?
At that, I'll open it up to questions.
Is there more?
It's pretty simple. That's what we're asking for.
So do I dare ask the question about the signal? Is that part of this?
The signal is related to the master special permit. We're not looking for modification to the master special permit at this time. That document is currently open under the Christmas tree.
Well, but we did open the hearing under the modification of the amended and restated master special permit?
No.
Don't think that's the case. We didn't request that.
No, I think the agenda's incorrect.
Okay.
It's... That should be modification just of the Form C. Mike, my question... I mean, it's my understanding, when this was first proposed to the town manager and myself, that in return for making this road end where it is and not build it fully to Clay Street, even though it would be blocked off, and in return for not requiring a cul-de-sac, which is what it would need to comply in and of itself with the subdivision rules and regs, that the surety money, just like a couple of years ago, the surety money was... If we had ended up combining this with Middleborough Park, the surety for this piece of the road was going to go to the improvements on 18 and 28 to widen it. They were going to do the design of 18 and 28. It was our understanding that if this application were applied for, this surety money, which we're holding $250,000, would end up going to at least design the signal. The town manager, who's the main representative on the JTPG, which is the Joint Transportation Planning Group, felt that if we had a design for the signal, if and when a signal was needed sometime in the future, which would basically help Campanelli get off the hook for a signal if they had actually had a design, if and when it's ever needed, we would have the ability just to go to SERPAD and the JTPG to put it on the tip, to have it just funded out of regular state funding. But without that kind of a design, this whole park still stays held hostage. So the idea was to not only do this piece, but also to modify the master permit to remove the requirement of, from the town standpoint at least, for Campanelli to build the signal, because we would have them just pay for the design, and then we'd modify the permit to incorporate all of this. So we're getting a small piece. We're going to return the money, but we don't have the bigger piece, which is what this was all part of, a bigger framework.
I can let Jeff address that. And we... Yes, we have had those conversations between Ruth and Charlie Cristello. I'd like to point out, just for the board's information, there are two places where currently Campanelli is required to put that signal in. They're not exactly identical, but they're similar in the way they're worded. One is the master special permit, and the other is the Mass DOT Section 61 curb cut permit, which facilitated the construction of Campanelli Drive and Leona Drive.
So what I'm hearing is, we're going to approve this, we're going to give them the money back, and we're still on the hook. We're still on the hook.
Well, it's... I wouldn't recommend... See, the thing is, is we have never before certified a project complete that didn't meet subdivision rules and regulations. And in order to meet subdivision rules and regulations, this, by our regs, needs a cul-de-sac or it needs to become a through road. This whole scheme to end it this way was in... Was part of this bigger picture.
Right.
Just like the... I'm concerned that the fire department's letter is not really getting to the issue. To read this, it says, "The purpose of this visit," from Dick Halverson and going up to Campanelli, "the purpose of the visit was to evaluate fire department access to the property in its current configuration without connecting Campanelli Drive to Clay Street, plan attached." So Lance Benjaminos of the impression that this was actually supposed to be connected to Clay Street with two points of access. He says, "I find that the current configuration does not hamper fire department or emergency vehicle access, providing the gate located at the near... At the rear of NES has a lock box attached with a key to the lock." Now, I don't know what gate they're talking about there. Maybe the gate out to Clay Street.
No, there is no gate to Clay Street, actually. There's a gate on this back driveway right here that they closed at night.
Okay.
And I've spoken with them. They may have to put a lock box on that key. Let's...
The thing is, is the fire department doesn't reference it. The letter was supposed to say they'd be happy with dead-ending without a cul-de-sac, because this was never going to connect to Clay Street unless it connected all the way through to Commerce and Clay Street was dead-ended. So I don't think that the fire department really is addressing what the planning board's concerns are, which is, is he... Can he... This is supposed to have a cul-de-sac. He's supposed to be saying it doesn't need a cul-de-sac, because they can turn around adequately in the road that's out there.
But in concept, if that's fine, we can get the letter changed.
We can get the letter changed.
I think the letter... I don't think Chief Benjaminos will have any problem changing the letter. He and I discussed it with a great deal of specifics. His letter just apparently is not exactly the way that you like to see it.
And he does...
I'm sure he will.
He does reference the plan on the back, so.
Right, but the plan shows it going out to Clay Street, and it's not, you know...
Yeah.
It makes it look like it's a through road, and it's not a through road.
That's a dot the i and cross the t.
Yeah.
I'm sure we get that back quickly. Okay, so whether... Any other planning department thoughts coming?
Yeah, one comment. Dick said that the need to connect to Commerce Boulevard has gone away. The need to connect to Commerce Boulevard has not gone away.
Wrong.
Conroy... Terry Conroy in Middleborough Park at 495 is required to build any further into Phase II to make this second connection through this park to get out to Bedford Street. They cannot signalize their own intersection, and they can't build any further. So there... We still have the same condition, that both permits refer to that park connecting into this park. But it was clear from the court case that we went through on the subdivision modification that they don't have rights, unless the town took Campanelli Drive as a public way and then allowed them to connect in. They don't have any rights to connect in there unless they got an easement from the Campanelli Companies. That was very clear. That came out of the court battle. So there is still a need. My anticipation is that they would have to buy an easement from Campanelli in order to access over Campanelli's road, and... But in order to build their industrial park any further, they would have to do that. So there is still a need. The both master permits require this, so that the layout... That's why you still see the green layout in place, is that can't go anywhere. It's just that there's no sense for Campanelli to build this last stretch, because in order to connect Commerce Boulevard into Campanelli Drive, both the horizontal... I mean, both the vertical and the horizontal alignment of that connection has to be tweaked for what's shown on this plan. So it makes no sense for them to build this road to Clay Street and then never use it and have it ripped up if and when Commerce Boulevard comes through.
Okay.
So I think we have to actually lay this all out now under the... And try to figure out what's really being proposed. Is the master permit going to be proposed to be modified, too? Where's the signal piece here, and how does this all fit together?
Well, that's why I was asking. As presented, that was left out. And as left out, it still works. It's just, it's not a trade-off. The money goes away, and then Campanelli is responsible for the signal, should the warrants be tried. Yes, you have to step up.
Jeff? Hi, here's Chairman Jeff DiMarco with Campanelli Companies, for the record. The... Perhaps there's a little... You know, some details to be worked out on this. It certainly would be Campanelli's intention, if we were to put money, the equivalent of the cost to finish Campanelli Drive, and I think that might be one of the details, because I'm not sure that I would simply go right to the surety number. I think we'd be willing to contribute what it costs us to finish the road. I don't think the two are very far apart, but I think our actual cost to finish the road would be a little bit less than the $250,000 bond that's out there. So that's something we could, you know, we could continue to talk about. But Campanelli is really only willing to do that if we are let go from the responsibility to do the signal. So this could very well then require the modification to the master special permit. The reason that that was withdrawn and that it's not being resubmitted right at the moment is because frankly, it was getting a little complicated with the modifications that Christmas Tree was making to the master special permit. And it became a little bit of a challenge as to how to handle both edits at the same time. I think that was one thing that would make this a little bit cleaner, is if the Fourth Amendment is completed, and then if need be, a Fifth Amendment would be a very... A very simple one, if the board is of a mind to do so, you know? The other thing that maybe we could talk about, Ruth, is basically what to do with the money. I'd hate to see us actually go ahead and fund a design that would perhaps sit on the shelf forever and never get used. It seems as though every time we try to predict the future and do something in advance, when they actually get around to doing it, they do something different. So, you know, we can talk about that, too. I can see the benefit of having a design done and completed, but I could also see somebody, the state, for one, deciding to do something a bit different, or maybe considerably different. Or if someday Middleborough Park at 495 is connected through, then there's a first big question. Do you do the design, assuming it is or isn't? So I don't know, as we should jump to the conclusion that actually the design is done right now, but the money would be available.
Well, that's not what I... I don't think I heard that in the presentation. I think I heard, "Finish the road, get our surety."
Well, what we're talking about right now is not finishing the road, and if the board is of a mind to approve of the road as is and call it done. And then take the money that we would have spent to finish the road and put it towards these things that would be of a benefit to the entire neighborhood in this area.
So what are these things?
Well, these things might very well be... The first thing on the list is toward the signal. Maybe it sits in an escrow for the foreseeable future, and it's actually put to pay for the signal, if the state did the design. Or it's used to pay for the design, whatever. Whatever. But it would certainly want to be spent for some benefit in the immediate vicinity, and that's a logical...
So I mean, you'll have to sit down and help figure out the logistics, but if they take the money and put it in an escrow, then that goes... The whole modification of the special master special permit could be pushed aside from?
Well, no. Because we wouldn't spend that money unless we were assured that the master permit was revised to take us out of the responsibility to build the signal. The theory there being that even if we did finish the road, that the master permit says the signal is only warranted if the traffic from our park warrants it, and as it turns out, our park doesn't. So...
Not right now.
Right. Right. But, I mean, with the maturity of the park at this point, it's much more likely that other factors in the community in that area are going to probably trip and require that signal than anything from our park.
All right, well, that's just the logistics I wanted to hear. Mr. Dallas ended it. And I was like, "And?"
I think Jeff makes a really good point. I mean, we've been... How long did we push the ring road? It was on the state's agenda. It was in the NEIR. It never... I mean, and then suddenly, they've changed the whole plan. But on the flip side is, we've been working with him in this whole concern that we... You know, from the traffic studies we've done, their park, as it's planned, particularly... know, from the traffic studies we've done, their park as it's planned, particularly that east side of the park, is not going to need, it's not going to warrant a signal. So he's going to be hostage forever with this requirement on both the state and the local level. The idea was, is, okay, if he funds the design of the signal, we take, I think it's condition number 13, correct me if I'm wrong, condition number 13 out of the master permit, which makes them build the signal when it's warranted. They would still have to fight that battle with mass D O T, but we'd have a signal in the bank. And I think how to deal with this is something that, you know, we could even meet with D O T and ask them, you know, to kind of make this get a little bit further down the road.
Okay.
So hopefully it ends up a win-win for everybody at the end of the day. I mean, that, that does seem to be an opportunity.
Well, I mean, it sounded like a win-win to begin with, so. I mean, the whole picture. When I said "and." Any other planning board members? Yes?
Mr. Chairman. Ruth, I got a quick question then. This whole thing all was laid out according to the Ring Road. That still hasn't gone away, I mean, that's still coming back.
It could come back.
Okay, so my thing is, like you said, Parker 495, if they ask for another lot, they're going to have to build out two Bedford Street.
They can build one more, they can build the lot behind Compass without building out.
But I'm saying, the rest of that park.
Beyond Sorelli's.
They're going to have to build out the Clay Street. So my question is, who's going to build this, this green section if Campanelli doesn't do it? If, I'm saying, if Parker 495 comes in tomorrow and say they're going to continue.
They would have to build that. They would have to cross Clay and build that.
How do we get an easement on, onto that? If we're going to sign off, release the money, that Campanelli doesn't have to build it, how do we get a thing?
The, the rub of this is, unless, do you want to say it, or do you want me?
I'd like to hear what you have to say first.
You've kind of already said it.
No, the rub of this is, is if Commerce Boulevard connects to Campanelli Drive, they will trigger a signal. And right now, he's on the hook to pay for the $3 million worth of signal. So that's why, without having an easement purchase, which would then trade off the money to give them the right to go over this piece of road, which triggers the signal, it's not, it's, you know, they have no interest to allow this, because they're going to end up holding the bag on a signal if Commerce Boulevard goes into it. The only way of resolving that is if the town took it, or if they bought an easement.
I might have had a variation of that.
Before you, before you said that, you also said in the court discussions that...
What, Conroy, when the, they appealed, when we denied the subdivision modification, when the $1.9 million grant went away because Conroy didn't agree to the conditions, they then, because we had an open subdivision modification on the table to bring that grant plan into fruition, they appealed that open subdivision modification, and we were in court for almost two years on that appeal, and finally won. And, but what it was over, they were trying to make the case that there was nothing in the master permits on either park that made them buy an easement to gain this access. And the town's case on that was, that may be so, that it's not explicitly there, but it's implied, because you otherwise have no right to go on Campanelli land and build your road and send your cars on it. So whether or not it says there's an easement required, and the judge agreed, that they didn't have any right to access without an easement. So, but it's because they would have to pay for a signal totally triggered by another developer's park.
Right. It's basically a stalemate at this point, until someone decides to, basically until it makes financial sense for either park to do it, it's never going to happen.
Well, it doesn't make any sense for them to deal with it.
Right.
Because they're never going to trigger it.
Right.
I would have, I would have said, Ruth, that, let me just back up a little bit. In, in, in all of my experience of, of never, other than state grant money, I've never seen anybody but a developer of a park build the infrastructure for the benefit of the park. So in other words, if, if, if building, if connecting the two parks, even at the cost of adding a signal, opens up land in that park that has value, then, then there may very well be good reason for the other developer to decide that that makes financial sense to do it. Campanelli certainly could never make those numbers work, because we don't have any new construction or new development to justify any, any great cost. So that's just, that's just one observation. If Middleborough Park at 495 did connect through, I would certainly argue that it isn't the Campanelli park that then triggered the warrant for the signal, because our permit says if our park warrants a signal, we have to put it in. And if it's the connection of their park that kicks it in, then I would say that they would have to pay for it, because our park didn't warrant it again, you know?
So that, that would probably, I'm no lawyer here, but I would assume that would be part of that buying an easement from them.
Well, we don't have any reason to stand in the way of an ultimate connection, if we be. We just don't want a connection to cost us a lot of money with zero gain or, or increased developability.
But the leverage point is the purchase of an easement.
That's my opinion. Jeff, I don't know how you see it. It's, if he doesn't feel that that's what it is, then, you know.
An easement would cost $3 million.
I humbly don't think this signal would cost that much. I've heard up to a million.
Right.
I wouldn't really have a problem going on record right now, that we'd give him the easement for free if he agreed to pay for the signal.
There you go.
You know, it's not like we're going to be looking for some big payday for that little piece of dirt. So, you know, we're not, we've been in it too long to, to be an obstructionist at this point.
So that's part B, and what we're saying is push that aside for right now?
Well, that's what they've petitioned. I don't know if we want to separate it, I think that's something we should look at through this hearing, but that's what they're proposing, is to, you know, to just do this partial, what, the two things we would have to do is modify the subdivision approval to make it end prior to the construction of the road, end prior to Clay Street, give them a waiver for having no cul-de-sac turnaround, and then also modify the covenant. That would give them a subdivision plan to build two. We would then turn around and say, "Okay, now you've already built to that plan, so we can now certify you complete." They're asking that we do both at the same time, so we'd issue concurrent findings, you know, say that the plan only has to be built this far, and we'd still leave the right-of-way go all the way to Clay, but not the construction. And then we would make a finding that they actually built it according to that plan, and we'd find that they're complete.
So just so you know, I mean, the legal advertisement that I, I read through basically says that they are looking for a release of surety.
Yes, well, that's when we certify them complete, complete as it relates to the new plan.
Right.
When we certify them complete, we would release that $250,000.
So that $250,000, as of right now, as this is written, will not be applied to the signal?
Right.
Chairman?
Yes.
Let me ask a question. Seeing complete means that this, this green section, that was part of the original plan, and we're just saying now, complete is not included in that, which to me is saying not complete.
Well, we're modifying, it's correct me if I'm wrong, we're modifying what the plan would say as far as complete.
Right.
Which wouldn't meet subdivision requirements, but it's still incomplete. I'm just, I'm, what's wrong with finishing this? And then the other park cannot burden the switch.
Because the intent was, they could finish it out to Clay Street, but it was prohibited that they ever enter Clay. You don't, you would, it was only going to go to Clay in order to be ready for the other park to tie in and then dead-end Clay. So there's no need to finish, it doesn't give any better access for them to build to Clay Street, because there's still going to be a Jersey barrier there.
I mean, but it was part, it wasn't part of the original plan, but it was part of the original plan, that's what I'm stuck on.
If I could clarify that, the original plan called for the divided road to go all the way to Clay Street, and a concrete barrier to be constructed at Clay Street, that is what we were obligated to do in the original subdivision plan.
Right. So instead of a concrete barrier, why can't we put a fire gate?
Or bollards.
Oh, no, a fire gate. That's so if there's an emergency situation, the fire department can open up the gate and have access to that, and nobody else can have use of it. And then solve all this problem, we put up to there, so Parker 495 was ever completed, it'd be done.
You said that the road would have to be reworked.
That's right.
But if you...
It would all be wasted.
But that's a what-if, that's again, we're planning for the unknown, we don't know. This was a plan that was approved, finished plan.
Yeah, but let's not just head off in futility for no reason. Let's not just throw good money after bad and build a road to nowhere that's never going to meet any sort of specifications, because the grading is completely incorrect. If you have, you know, five feet difference in grading, what's the point of having the road there? You've just basically wasted money that potentially could be negotiated to provide betterment in other areas in a better way.
You're talking about the switch? Wouldn't you lessen the load on the switch, too, when you have two outlets?
What's a switch?
What, 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 what other outlet?
Okay, hang, hang on guys.
What other outlet?
There would be one at the gate room, wouldn't there be?
No, because it says that, the plan that you're talking about says that you cannot connect through Clay Street.
And that was...
So there's not two outlets. There's only one outlet that's banned from being there.
So, so hang on. So, correctly if I'm right, Ruth, even if they built this to Clay Street, they would not be allowed to exit out to Clay Street.
Correct, because the...
Otherwise, they'd put a fire gate in.
That's probably the only emergency situation, is that right?
Right. And they really don't need that. They don't really need it, because there's, there's a, you know, double-barrel road there, and for the buildings that are there, accessing, having them on a dead end and asking, accessing from Bedford Street is more than adequate for the demand.
Campanelli Drive does not need that, that built to Clay Street.
So basically, we say...
All they want, if the plan originally permitted, the original plan says they have to be done.
So basically, what's going to end up happening, if we say, "Okay, you're going to stick to the original plan," they're going to say, "Okay, well, you know what, we're not going to build to that plan, it doesn't make sense to," and the project's going to sit out there in this unfinished state until, A, some future board has a different plan.
It's going to stay in...
Which is what's been happening for the past 10 years.
Right. So what you're saying, so what they're saying is modify the plan, certify it's complete.
Right.
That's what they're requesting.
That's what's being asked.
But you've got, someday, Parker 495 will assume, will be built, will be continued, it's going to continue on.
But wouldn't that be their expense, then?
But then you can't connect on to this other section.
Why not?
Because they have no easement or nothing.
They don't have what?
They don't have an easement.
Well...
They don't have anything.
So, so we're just going in a big round circle, so Ruth, start again with the legal battle.
But you've got to Parker 495, eventually, sometime, that's going to be finished, sometime. I can't see that forever not ever being built.
But that's not their responsibility.
But it's not Campanelli's responsibility.
I understand that. But then you've got a subdivision here that's, that plan shows it's going to be built out to there, I'm just saying, this is the only subdivision you'll have, they won't have a cul-de-sac in the end of it then. They're building a road, I'm just saying, that's something we don't, haven't ever done before.
To, to, to one of Bill's points, we'd be willing to have the document leave for the record, that, that that land would be left available for connection, but that whoever owns Middleborough Park at 495, when the connection happens, they would simply have to pay for the construction to do so. If that construction warranted a signal, that would be part of their cost. I can't really sit here and say that it definitely would, but that, that, that could be part of the final record.
Well, I feel, I feel a little more comfortable with something like that there, so you don't have to leave Parker 495 hanging. You want me to, to sign off saying they're not going to build that, I want something that guarantees, protects Parker 495, they can have ability to get on to that and do that somehow. Even if they have to pay for it, but as long as they have the ability to do it, that's all the same.
And I think the, if the signal has been designed as part of this, it, it helps to remove Campanelli from the presence, because they've actually taken, and they're not saving by doing this, they're actually having the same amount of money in the game, but it's now being shifted to give the town through the J T P G or whatever other method we may need to do. It gives us the ability to take that and help, and let them off the hook of this signal, because that's still what you'd like. They'd still like to get off the hook and get rid of condition number 13, which is why this whole thing works together rather than bisecting it like this. That the master permit should be part of this discussion, too.
I understand, Campanelli Park, the way it's developed now, will not trigger a signal. They do not have enough lots there anymore. They're built out, they're not going to trigger it. I'm just more worried about protecting Parker 495's ability to connect on to there, and if they do it, connect on to there, and if they do trigger it, they can, they can build a signal, or pay for the signal. I just want the ability to have that green piece available for Parker 495.
So I need to take all those concepts?
What do I put on?
Put it in some kind of modified permit.
Is there a right structure, an easement, or something that could be agreed to, that basically kind of states the conditions, letting you guys off the hook for the signal, but basically making it as a condition of crossing that sec, crossing that section, and this is all legal lawyer stuff, so, but that gives, shifts the burden of whoever creates that road, if they trigger the signal, to shift that burden of that signal on to whoever basically connects those two roads. I don't...
Yes, I think that could be done.
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
Because that would, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable in, A, releasing monies that was designed to basically provide the section of road to be built, without basically stranding another park, because honestly, for the betterment of the town as a whole, having this as a whole completed industrial area is better for the town as a whole.
But, Mr. Chairman, though, isn't though, there is the possibility that if Christmas Tree gets their permit to open, and then another place gets a permit to open, that Campanelli could in fact trigger their own, trigger that one?
It's a big crystal ball.
It's actually pretty unlikely to be being met, most would be more...
You'd have to, you've got to stand up, sorry.
Most of the signal warrants that are close to being met are actually being generated from that side of the street, not from the Christmas side street, because pretty much the only turns that really matter for purposes of the warrant are the left-hand turns coming from that on to 18 towards the Rotary, because that's where it backs up. At Christmas Tree, most of the turns being right-hand turns, which is easy to access from our site, because it's right there.
But there's a lot on that side, right? I D X has an opportunity...
There are no more vacant lots. There are a few opportunities for some buildings to be expanded, but there are no more vacant lots.
Or if we actually set the precedent of allowing retail use, it opens the possibility for other members of that park to petition for the same thing, which then opens that can of warrants.
I think what Craig was trying to say, and that we got to learn, is that most of the businesses that can avail themselves of that are on the real estate side, and that isn't the side that really is in jeopardy of triggering the warrants here, the way it's being...
As Adam has said, though, if you do a retail operation, you're not figuring a turn right or left, so you could trigger, trigger it. You have the bakery down there, the Serta down there, very easily, it could be two, you know, two more retail operations out of there.
I think part of that depends upon the limitations you put on the retail use accessory, the retail accessory uses. For example, Christmas Tree shops were limited to Friday evenings, Saturdays and Sundays, which on those particular days, the warrants aren't even remotely close to being met, because there's literally no employees at the sites. So as long as the board maintains consistent in keeping those same parameters, the warrant's not going to be met. If you opened up the retail use seven days a week for nine to five usage, sure, it very well could be met, but, except I probably, from the board's perspective, you'd probably want to limit the hours just to...
Why did that file off, or what is it, the four-hour requirement, from five, to five to nine? Some of them were pretty close.
Correct, but it's not, if you meet one warrant, it's not one warrant that trips the signal.
It's not that far off.
Yeah, but you have to meet six warrants in a row. You have to meet six of those in an eight-hour period. So just going, one warrant going over the limit doesn't trip, or doesn't...
Again, we're talking about crystal balls here, too.
All right, so...
But, but I think the thing that we, we need to be flexible, and I think that what's happened now with Christmas Tree and the retail, which I think we all agree would be very beneficial. It would be beneficial to the town if Serta sold some accessory... It would be beneficial to the town if Serta sold some accessory retail. It would be beneficial to us if any of those big companies there did. Campanelli does not wanna be on the hook, that is not the park they permitted, it's not what they ever envisioned. That's why this whole idea of taking the cash, getting the signal designed, Campanelli walks away, their park is basically done. Then if there's a traffic problem from the park, that's when you would go and put the signal on the tip, it's already designed, if it's at seventy-five percent, it will get right up near in the programming, and it becomes a regional transportation improvement piece. And that's why all of this together benefits the tenants, benefits the developer, and benefits the town.
So how, so the, the goal is to package this instead of...
Right.
...the one piece of the town.
I, I think packaging is the way to go, because they've raised a great issue with, with, with Christmas Tree. Christmas Tree and all the others could end up presenting a threat, and they'd end up having to do something they never intended to do, which is retail demand. But we wanted, we want to permit Christmas Tree, and so does everybody else. This helps get Campanelli out of the way.
So, if I understand, that's not what was presented?
No, that was not what was presented.
It's not presented that way, again, as Jeff said, because of the conflict that we were running into with Christmas Tree's structure.
Right.
So, you know, with likelihood that you could wrap there, for how, in short order, you can probably continue ours and expand it.
Yep.
And you're expanding it.
Then what they would do is they would apply for the master permit, and then we would schedule them at the very same time. We'd open the master permit and we'd be running this one. We've done it so many times.
I know, but at least if this, the opening of this issue now allows us to address all of these issues.
Right.
So that frankly, the opening and closing of what would probably be the Fifth Amendment...
I just wanna summarize, it's, doesn't sound like there's much disagreement, it's just, the only disagreement is to package it.
And I think between meetings, we can work that out.
Is there any public comment on this? Anybody wanna jump up and talk from the public? You were sitting there, too, I thought you were gonna jump up.
Well, who wants to reach in?
How is your buffering and everything else over there? It's working?
Yeah, yeah. My brother's...
Pat lives on Clay Street, she's been to every hearing we've ever had since the nineteen-eighties. You back up to what used to be Champion Exposition, that's now Freeman Group or whatever it is. So you've got like forty-eight loading docks, but she's got a bigger than mound, she's got a sound wall, a lot of planted vegetation, and you probably don't even know it's there.
The, the planting must be taken now, fine.
But, um...
Okay, um, any other public comments? Any planning board comments? Planning department, applicant, got a lot of work to do. So we need to continue this? Two? Anybody have any guesses? Wanna go out to April-ish? Is that too far?
No, it's not too far, 'cause if they're gonna submit the other one, um...
Good, good kickoff. I wanna say...
Eighth of the twenty-second.
The eighth or the twenty-second.
Jeff, which would you like, April eighth or April twenty-second?
We're already March, so, go end of April?
I think...
That would pretty much close you out, wouldn't it?
Other than to sort of have a meeting, talk, and give you time for a sidebar, it's a need, the sooner the better, I'd rather be with the eighth.
As long as we're gonna talk about packaging the project.
Yeah, I think perhaps, it will be, with Ruth, if we...
I mean, I have a problem with the eighth.
So, we'll be here, are you thinking?
That's fine.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion to continue the hearing for Campanelli Industrial Park Form C modification only, as of right now, to April eighth, and I'm gonna bump that up to seven forty-five P M.
So move.
We have a motion on the table?
Second.
We have a second, open for further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, abstained, that motion carries. Thank you. Good, seven forty-five, please. Well, because we, sometimes we finish the beginning stuff so fast, so...
Okay, thank you.
Sometimes we don't.
And, and don't leave because there's something to talk about, he's got a snag that you guys maybe can help with.
All right, uh, next hearing, uh, next item on the agenda is a hearing for Campanelli Business Park, which is actually by Christmas Tree Shop. This is the application for fourth master special permit for accessory retail use in Lot Nine, and parcel A, special permit for accessory retail parking, et cetera. Owner is Christmas Tree, Christmas Tree Shops, Inc. This was continued from February eleventh, two thousand fourteen, and we now have an expiration date of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Where are we?
Craig Medeas, attorney for Christmas Tree Shops, um, pretty much I wanted to provide a status update tonight. Um, there's a few things that we have made some good progress on. Um, I did provide the, uh, planning department with a letter from Spillane's regarding, um, the buffering at the site. Um, there is some additional work that needs to be done, which presumably will become a condition of our site-specific special permit, um, regarding the replanting of a couple of trees, and some maintenance work regarding the buffers, uh, but for the most part, the buffer isn't intact. Um, we expect of the drafting of the permits, um, still working on the planning department, uh, regarding some slight revisions to the master special permit, as well as site-specific special permit, um, however, we've made some good progress on that. Um, we're expecting the plans for the, uh, proposed use as the retail accessory use. Um, we're down to some very small details, and those are just about fine at this point. Um, expect to give the board a final, um, copy of the plans at our next meeting. Um, and then, kind of finally, our only stumbling block so far, which I mentioned at last meeting, is that as part of this application, we're amending the master special permit. Um, as part of that, we're going to be submitting a, a new updated master special permit plan, as the previous master special permit plan was drafted in two thousand two. Um, kind of the issue with that is, is that Cubellus, who is also Christmas Tree Shops' engineer at the time, um, had drafted the last master special permit plan. They're no longer in business. Um, so we had actually contacted, um, David Kelly at, Kelly Engineering Group, who's actually also the engineer for Campanelli, um, to inquire about him drafting a master special permit plan regarding the layout of the park. Um, we ran into a little bit of a snag about that, because, um, one thing which he's reviewing is whether or not he needs to do additional fieldwork at the site, as opposed to accepting the engineering work, which was done, done by Cubellus and compiling that into a plan. Um, so he's currently working on logistics of getting that plan together, um, but that's kind of our final item, that's, in terms of timing, a little bit of a stumbling block for us, because we don't know when that's going to be completed.
You talked to Susan Packard at all?
I've not.
She's got her own firm, started. She might have those plans.
That's what we're essentially looking for, is somebody that has those plans, because we haven't been able to find somebody yet that does, and then essentially just update them from two thousand two to the current time, which really shouldn't involve too much work, because it's essentially, I think IDEX was even the two thousand two plans, so it's essentially Bimbo Bakery's, that's the only new building that's been constructed over there.
Why this plan's necessary is because this is a master special permit that covers, I don't know, eleven lots, or however many lots are out there. You need a plan that actually shows what lots are under the permit, and so there's two plans to the master special permit, it's called the master special permit land plan. The first sheet shows all of the lots, but no, no bearings or distances or anything, the buildings that are built on them, with the square footage of the, I think the lot area might be on there, um, but the square footage of the building, and then there's a little dotted line that shows expansion areas. It's basically the conceptual plan, but every time a master permit's issued, it's brought up to date for the new construction. So it would show Bimbo Bakery, IDEX, it would show everything. It would also show how many square feet each of the built, buildings are, and how many square feet of expansion is left. So it's, it's, the, the first sheet is for everybody to keep track of what we've actually got in place today, or the issuance of each permit. The second sheet is probably the more important sheet, which is the land and the lots with their legal configuration, so it shows the lots, and I think it probably has survey data on it. This is compiled from Form As or the subdivision plan, whichever created the lot, and, and then it's just got the deed and title information. And that can be compiled from existing Form A and subdivision plans. So I'm not quite sure why David Kelly would, who used to work with Cubellus Savitz, correct? I don't know why David Kelly, um, is having such trouble, because he doesn't have to generate any new, he's not creating new lots, he's not creating a new road, it's just basically updating a plan, and when they go for a fifth amended master special permit, they've gotta generate this very same plan. So he's gonna be generating it sooner or later, you know, I don't know what the big deal is, but that's actually gonna be the holdup, is this plan.
Well, I, I actually chatted with David Kelly a bit about that yesterday, and I'm not sure what, he explained to me that there was gonna be a holdup, and he was wanting a, 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 he does not have the original Cubellus plans, other than hard cotton.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there are several sources of people out there that might have those plans. Uh, I can, I can give you a name or two, and they're a little fast on it, David Kelly, uh, but that's only a guess, I'm not sure that should have been actually out there. Um, I'm certainly not familiar with any of the people who did, about expedite them.
But I believe that plan was recorded, and so if it's a plan of record, and all he's gonna do is amend, and, and if you said IDEX is already on it, Bimbo might not be, you'd have to add...
That was the only one that's not on it.
Add Bimbo. I don't see where he couldn't take and convert a paper plan and basically say, this was compiled from previous, I, I don't really know, you know?
It should be, it should be difficult, I, uh, keep in touch with Cubellus, and if we need, uh, I can, if we're gonna have some, we're gonna have to, so we'll talk to David.
Okay, 'cause I sent him to David, 'cause I feared he'd be the best person, 'cause he'd be doing your plans anyway, so, um, the...
Packard, do you want him?
The other thing is, is that, uh, Campanelli's attorney, Kathy Bachman, did mock up the draft, um, master special permit, which I got back today. I forwarded it to Craig, so he could see it, wrote back to you guys, we're probably gonna do a conference call tomorrow. There's a misunderstanding, what this permit reflects is, we recertified the entire zoning bylaw, has all new numbering, and in the, in the section related to issuance of special permit, it actually has new findings that Mark Babrowski helped us prepare. So you can't issue a permit under current zoning without reflecting the new recertified bylaw. You can't go and say section, you know, ten, when it's now section nine point four point two.
But Ruth, I, I doubt it would change what the board found, that being...
It's, it's different language, it's, it's different findings, the findings instead, they're, they're, if you compare the both, it's very, some of them are similar, but there's other ones that are very different.
But isn't, isn't this part of that permit, just a record of what the board found, back in days, and how can you, how can you change the language of what they found?
Because they're re, they're amending and restating it, but this, whenever they make a change, they, whenever they make a change and issue a new special permit, the fundamental findings, which are the basis for issuing a special permit, they have to find it all over again. You know what I mean? They're not reflecting findings from some other time, they're actually re, remaking those findings at, at every issuance.
All right, can you guys, this is a little bit complicated, take, take that to the lawyers.
We'll work on this.
Um, so, you kind of shot us like fifteen things you're working on all at once.
Sure, I mean, pretty much the...
Do you have a little checklist, look that one through?
The stumbling block is pretty much the master special permit plan. Um, we're working on the drafting of the master special permit itself, the site-specific special permit, I would expect those to be done relatively shortly. Um, our actual proposed retail accessory use plans are almost done at this point in time, um, so that master special permit plan is kind of our...
Nothing the town's holding you up with, or we're holding you up.
Did you list the groundwater monitoring, you were gonna have that, there were...
It's a good, make a condition in the permit.
Okay.
It's gonna be done as of date in April, I believe.
Okay.
I believe it was May, that we set.
And maybe Spillane can specify a date that he's gonna replace the trees.
Exactly.
That's part of their maintenance program.
Yeah, maintenance under, under request of a permit.
Best time to ask for it.
Yeah.
All right, any public comment? Anything? Any other planning board comments, thoughts?
Peter, did you see the cot corral on the front of the plan? I think it's on page one of the big set. It's, it's just a little cot detail, and they show the parking space that it's gonna be in. That looks like Campanelli. No, that's, should be that one.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Is that the Christmas tree color?
And there is a, there's a parking space where it's designated, when you're going up to the, the stairs, it's right to the right.
Okay. So, how much time? Are we gonna get to a point where we can sign off on this one, please? How much time do we need?
I'll just make...
Because everybody's dying, you know, pools are gonna be opening soon, and...
I'd say probably April, um, eighth would be a good time, hopefully, again.
Any objections? Hear anybody objecting to April eighth? I already said public comment, all right. All right, we will, uh, the chair will entertain, oh, just one...
Yep. So, being somewhat optimistic, um, should we put them on before the other Campanelli issue? Because then technically, if this closes out then, and we close out the fourth amended special, master special permit, then any potential issuance of a fifth amended master special permit or whatnot, if there was an additional modification that needed to be made, could be open following this, assuming that that was gonna go in place.
I don't think they'll be ready.
Well, hopefully we could be named, we should, it depends, all depends on David Kelly.
I think a master special permit...
Okay. We'll put you on first.
I'm, I'm being optimistic, but hopefully...
Uh, the chair will entertain a motion to continue the hearing for Campanelli Business Park by Christmas Tree Shop, um, to April eighth, two thousand fourteen, at seven forty P M.
So move.
So we have a motion on the table?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yep.
Abstained? That motion carries. We got you on five minutes, quickly.
If it goes through, you know?
Seems like we should have all three of them here, at the same time.
It works.
Try that, uh, you know, Susan was a, um, Craig, Susan was a principal Cubellus, and she's restarted.
But I don't understand if I do have a plan...
Yeah, you know, I have no idea if she has it.
I think, I think we know where the questions are.
Oh, you do?
The question is, can we get them, and can David Kelly get permission to rely on them? It's a professional thing there, that...
Yeah.
You can't, can't just get a plan and say, I've posted my plan on this, without the author of that plan saying, you have my permission to rely on, so it's...
Yeah, no, no.
So a little bit of...
But there is no author to...
Well, there is, actually, that the, the gentleman at Stanford, I saw, it's not under his surveyor, who, we have to know who he is.
Okay.
No, where did David Kelly try this with them?
Okay, great, appreciate your help.
Well, now you guys are all up to speed on the, the Rotary Industrial Park. I mean, we've covered every point that, tonight, that you could think of.
Do I have to make an official announcement for Mr. Salome to be able to vote on these things?
Only when it's time to vote.
Only when it's time to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have to check the, well, you got, we, there is in the packet for the next time, we've gotta make sure, I'm not sure he can vote, 'cause he's missed more than one meeting. He can miss, you guys, any of you can miss one meeting, but you can't miss more.
Yeah, we were gonna check on, oh, wait, Christmas Tree Shop, what the...
I've checked on Christmas Tree, and I believe that we're, no one has missed more than one, because the nights you've missed, we haven't... one, because the nights you've missed, we haven't, we haven't held any discussion. But I think on this one now, this next Campanelli, you would be eligible to act on it. The new one, that one, yeah. You can comment. You can participate up into the vote, yeah.
I didn't miss any.
But your two cents would be, you know...
Actually, I was just glad to see...
Missed one. Bill? Missed none. Yeah, so Mike, you're, you're on...
I got the record.
On Christmas tree. Peter, missed none. So we got four.
Yep.
So basically, um, if anybody's going to, well, I can't miss anymore.
There's only, hopefully, hopefully, there's only one. Hopefully, this is going to be the last one.
I like how you changed one meeting. We'll, we start at seven forty-five, and they go seven forty.
That was a good suggestion.
Five, get a difference there.
Hey, when you run a roll, you don't want to...
They could be done. Okay, um, there were some other things in the packets here.
That's pretty much all the business.
Anything with, uh... No, I was going to say, anything new happened with Oak Point?
Yes. Um, we did an onsite last week to look at whether there's swales around the units or not, and whether they graded it. They, they've been trying to make the case, they don't have to do an ASBIL plan for the phase, and, um, we said that it's very hard to do this additional drainage design if they don't know where the water's going, because we don't know whether they built it in accordance with the plan. And from what we saw out there, it really wasn't in accordance with the plan. So we, after that big meeting that Mike attended, which was a few weeks ago now, where we had this extensive discussion on that point, we went back to the office, and we found out that they've done an ASBIL plan and certified ASBIL topography on every phase up through seven one.
You took that message to Mr. Braun, right?
Yes. So, um, so now they're going to do the ASBIL, and we went out in an onsite last week just to look at the swales, but also to look at where they may supplement basin fifteen with a second basin out in watershed eight. Well, the first thing we saw when we went to look at the swales is not only the swales, either not built or built different, in many locations, instead of swaling it to the detention basin, they put catch basins in, and they're piping it somewhere else. So they've, we actually, in, in the first five minutes, we basically proved, you know, you really need to do an ASBIL to know where this water is going, because the long and short of it is, everything went around and around in basin fourteen A and fourteen B. If all that water never gets to fourteen A and fourteen B, they don't have to do that level of reconstruction. It's all going straight to fifteen. So it, it may, and I haven't said that to Stephen Braun yet, but he's aware that there's some, you know, major changes, but if all that water doesn't go to fourteen A and fourteen B, he's just going to deal with it downstream, so why make fourteen A and B bigger to accommodate water that's no longer going there? Um, but we did look at where they may put this new basin, and I think we're trying to now arrange to, um, observe test pits, because we need to see where groundwater is, so they don't dig well into the groundwater and be dewatering constantly like basin fifteen is. So that's in the works. They may have to go back. Remember, Bill, on phase one, how they, instead of digging into the ground, they basically burmed up and held the water near the surface? So they weren't excavating into groundwater. They, they built their detention on the hillside. So that's what they probably look at doing here. So it's going, it's going well.
And do we need to talk about Pebblebrook, or is that just a...
No, Pebblebrook's fine.
And, um, do I need, do we need to go to executive session for this meeting now? I missed ours.
Are they, are they executive session?
Yes.
Then you probably do.
To approve them.
But to answer Mike's question, you got here, Sheffield, we told him he didn't have to come in. He's made excellent progress, except for the...
I'll talk about Sheffield once I step down.
But we do have to check to see if that has to be, um, see if that has to be advertised ASAP. There's no sense in advertising if the deed, and we don't have the deed yet, because it's a waste of two hundred and fifty bucks.
This is a, that's going to be a fall.
I think so.
Which is, which, I shouldn't comment.
And just let you know, I have to go to the selectmen tomorrow night. I didn't go to the meeting last night, and my bud, our budget was up, so I have to go tomorrow night at their special meeting at seven thirty. They, they rejected them all. Town manager rejected them all. I was trying to increase our secretarial hours. She's, she's been cut to twenty-eight. We were trying to get it back to, I think, thirty-two, or thirty-five, one of those. Trying to get, so that we're, she's in the office for five days. No. I, I think you should stay out of it for now. We'll try again, maybe in the fall. Uh, it, it was probably the town manager's recommendation. I don't think he, he's, he didn't recommend any, any new spending whatsoever.
It's probably the right thing to do, but it's...
You don't like modifying a town meeting.
Well, the, the problem is, is that it's affecting the planning department's operations a little bit, but maybe you could shuffle the days around. No, you tried to do that.
We've got the days shuffled. What would help is if we shut the door one day a week like we used to when we got cut down, you know, when we first were cut down to these hours. It's just that on the fifth day, we're always the secretaries, so we're fielding balls.
You have to step out at door.
Those are expensive secretaries.
All right, um, I'm going to poll the members to, um, go to executive session. We will not be returning. We will adjourn, um, through that. Mr. Carbone?
Yay.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yay.
Mr. Will, Bill?
Garcia.
Turn the mic, Scott.